All right, welcome everybody to the Town Waterboro Planning Board meeting for April 2nd, 2025. Angela, can we start with roll call?
Rick Madruga.
Here.
James Ferris.
Here.
Rebecca Higgins.
Here.
Stacy Walker.
Here.
Diane Gart.
Here.
All right, next on the agenda is public hearing, which we don't have tonight. Next is old business, which is FA Zone change request, Steve Everett.
Do I need to speak again for this?
You are on the agenda, I don't know. I saw a copy of that letter.
I thought that since I wasn't notified, I wouldn't have to speak.
Oh, man.
So I know the last meeting we had talked about the letter, which I saw a draft of, which I think we have in front of us. Which I think is pretty basic, straightforward. So I don't know what the, what feedback you would receive in the middle based on.
Mike has an email from Michaela with her feedback with regards to the letter.
And Michaela just states that it would be helpful to add the page numbers 23 through 26. As far as the sections of the ordinance that would be affected in this change.
Makes sense.
That's pretty basic. And it's just pretty much primarily an informational meeting at this point and kind of fill out the homeowners. So it's just basically a call to get the public involved.
Yep. So I guess is our next step to determine a date for this?
We've, between myself and the assessing department, we've run a report for all the FNA homeowners, which is quite extensive, so now we've got to get them mailing together.
Gotcha, okay, so you have more steps to be before we can set dates and stuff like that, okay.
But it also includes people that own property.
Exactly.
Like that, as well, just not homeowners.
Exactly, it is, it is all the property owners.
Yeah, okay.
I guess that's, I guess our next step, right, is to continue to gather the data.
Yep, does the board feel as though this letter is adequate?
I, I think it states what we discussed, I mean, at a high level, I mean, I think if you put any more detail in there, you're kind of.
Convoluting.
Convoluting things, so.
Well, I agree with Michaela, I think people understand that.
Yeah, yes, yes. Yeah, I do, I do think that's a good addition. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it leaves enough open that it will create a situation for people to attend.
Promess discussion.
Right, that was, that was the intent, the keycap, simple.
Right. So I guess we'll wait for all of the information to be gathered and then we'll figure out date based on that. Anything else, did you have anything else to?
I didn't know I was supposed to be here for that. No, I don't have anything else.
All right, more to come, I guess.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Your work ethic.
All right. So next is new business, Town Waterboro Public Works, 100 Bennett Road, East Waterboro Owens?
McCullough.
McCullough, thank you.
I answered about anything.
Okay. Sebago Technologies, thank you, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
So I guess we'll start with your presentation.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, my name is Owen McCullough, civil engineer with Sebago Technologies retained by the town to help put together a site plan and walk you through the whole process for eventually going to be putting together a design build app package that would go out bid for contractors to bid on the project to hopefully come build the public works building. There was some monies approved at town referendum, so we're hoping to bring a project in and it's within that budget. With me is Jason Champion, who I think is very interested in this building. And Matt Morris, who's been working with us, is also here. So we did meet with staff la, uh, when did we meet, was it last week?
Yes.
I'm losing track of time here. And had some preliminary discussions, the planner from, regional planner came from Southern Maine Regional Planning. Pretty straightforward project, so I'll just, if it's all right, I'll just sort of take you through the whole thing and tell you what we're looking to do. So when you come into the, this is kind of the overall picture, the Waterboro parcel is very large around here. We're kind of interior to the site here, the existing gravel pit is down into here. The transfer station's right here where my cursor is. The sand and salt shed is in this location. The current public works building is this small square that's right here. And then kind of in between the sand and salt building and the current public works building is where the new building would go. So if you were standing out there looking up at the driveway that goes up, it's kind of in that gravel clear area that's up there now. We have to go back a little bit, just because of the size of the building. So one thing we'll end up having to do is there's a snowmobile trail that goes right through there. So we will be relocating the snowmobiles, used pretty regularly, so that we're not gonna, we'll interfere with it a little bit, but we'll relocate it as part of the project, make sure that that stays where it is. So let's talk about, this is a grading plan for the site that shows it. Where basically the finished floor of the building is going to be pretty much where the grade is up there right now. And then we'll have a paved apron, my cursor, a paved apron that'll tie into the paved apron in front of the sand and salt shed. And then it'll kind of come out around about 50 feet where you see here, it'll tie back into the apron in front of the existing public works building. And then it'll come over here and tie back into that area. So that will be in front of all the doors, the main doors in and out of the building. The current driveway is right here, we'll continue to use the current driveway. We're not proposing any changes to the driveway, everything will look pretty much like it looks now, except there'll be a building up on, on top of the site. This, all these little circles and dots in the back is a drainage swell that will build on the backside. So the site is kind of going uphill a little bit, so we have to cut into it a little bit and blend into the hills. So I've got some water, drainage naturally comes down off the hill. Right now, it just sort of comes down off the hill and down the site. But what we'll do is pick it up in a drainage swell in the back, take it around the building, which goes into a natural swell that already exists around the other side of the sand and salt shed. And that water will then go down into the gravel pit, so it's all internally drained. It just kind of works its way down to where it's always gone, and we'll pick it up through there. There'll be some propane tanks that we'll have to put in over here, there's no natural gas or anything like that on the site. So the propane tanks, this is going to be a very basic building, I'll show you the floor plan in a minute. But it'll be concrete foundation walls up three or four feet, pre-engineered metal building on top of it. Large door, bay doors for vehicles to go in and out. You can drive through the building and out the other side and back. There'll be a small office area that will be over in this location here. And that'll be for staff area, crew area, bathrooms, all those are the normal things that go into, into the building. Concrete floor throughout, there's a add-on that's a lean-to right here, the building's 100 feet by 120. So the base building's about 12,000 square feet. There's about a 20 by 100 foot sort of lean-to that comes over on this side for outdoor storage of equipment and materials. That would be on a concrete slab also. There's a wash bay that will be inside the building. One of the fundamental things that we try to put in public works buildings is the wash bay. They don't have anything now, and if you look at what they have to spend on a plow truck, I'm not gonna have to ask you to tell how much a plow truck costs, but the equipment's expensive, so by being able to have the ability to clean it, take care to get the materials off, it makes it a lot easier. This building also provides some opportunity for some of the equipment to be inside instead of sitting outside. It's a lot easier on the equipment. Eventually, you know, I think you'll be doing more and more, as the plan is, I think, over time, public work staff will grow and that group will take care of more and more within the town. And it's always best to have equipment inside, especially if you have, eventually have plow trucks, things like that, inside the small excavators, whatever. If you can put them inside the building, keep them out of the weather, they tend to last much longer. Because we have, we don't have public sewer and I have a wash bay, I cannot put the wash bay water into the septic system that's excluded from the main subsurface wastewater pools. So what we do is we come out, we'll be coming out the back of the building, and that will go into an oil-water separator, and then it'll go into a holding tank. The reason it goes through an oil-water separator is you get the oil out of it, then we have to hire somebody like Clean Harbers periodically to come in and pump it, and then the wet water that goes into the holding tank has the oil removed from it, and you can pump that, generally take that out to a tri-water, a wastewater treatment. And we've used this approach, the fire station ended in Wyndham didn't have sewer, we did the same thing. I have a public works building up in Worno, we did the same thing. It's a pretty standard approach, we'd love to have public sewer, but Sanford's a long ways away, so it wasn't within the budget. So we'll, we'll use the holding tank. It'll have, if all goes well, if we can, budget-wise it works out, there'll be, we'll try to put like a float and alarm in there so if the water gets up to a certain level, it'll have something that tells them it's getting to that, to that level, and then they can call somebody and have it pumped. There will be a new septic system just for the employees that comes out over on the administrative area, and it comes down to here. If you look at your plans, you might see that we originally had a sewer running out around the backside of the existing public works building. There's a very small sewer behind there, and we were thinking maybe we'll come out that way and tie into it. But it was a long way, the grades weren't really working out well. Our soil scientist was on-site just this week and dug some test pits over here next to the sand and salt shed. And as we all sort of already knew, it's all sand and deep well-drained gravel, so it's, it's fine for a septic system. It's pretty small, it's basically like a two-bedroom size house because it's 10 to 12 employees at 20 gallons a day for a person, so that's only like 240 gallons, it's not a, it's not a very big system. But it makes more sense to bring it out and put it in over here. It helps me a lot with the grades, so I can avoid pumps that might have to happen over here. We will also have a well over here in this location here, that will be installed. That well will provide water for domestic water, and it will provide water, there'll be a small, well, not small, it's about 500 gallon tank. There will be a plastic tank inside the building. That will be a buffering tank for the wash water, because unless we were gonna do something heroic with the well, we probably won't have enough water coming out of that well, so we've got to have a buffering tank for that. So we'll put a tank inside the building for that, that well. We did, and I'll explain why more here in a minute, we did sample, Jason went down and sampled the well that's down by the transfer station. There's a well down there for the transfer station, we wanted to know what the water quality was. Met drinking water standards, it's all fine. And the reason I bring that up is this site, you'll see a line on the plan that says 300 feet from, it's this line right here. Years ago, we got a V-RAP for the site, which, and a voluntary response action program. And that was because there were old tannal, tannery lagoons on the site. Dennis knows the story way better than I do, but there was a tannery in town, he brought the fluid out, put it in that. And when we did the sand and salt shed years, years ago, not that many years ago, but a few years ago, where we wanted to put it was right where the old tannery lagoons were. So not a big deal, but we needed to go through the V-RAP process. It's basically, what a V-RAP does is you disclose that there were, because a tannery's full of different solvents and things that aren't really good for the environment, which stopped many, many years ago, but we really didn't find anything. Ransom Environmental was hired to do a study up here, environmental, and really didn't come up with anything that was, you know, really horrible. So we were able to get a V-RAP that allowed us to build the sand and salt shed there, but they did ask that we didn't put any wells, drinking water wells, within 300 feet of the building. I can tell you that this well is sort of up gradient from it, the well that's down by the transfer station is downhill from it. Now, generally groundwater will be deep into the aquifer, but it'll follow the land contour. And the water quality was great down by the transfer station, which we were, we were surprised at honestly. But it was potable and it was fine, so we, we just wanted some background information, so we did do that. And we're outside the, the 300 feet for the well will go. Electrical coming into the site will be single-phase electrical, our electrical engineers met Jason out there. We've looked at the electrical use, we don't have three-phase down there, a three-phase power. Awfully expensive to bring three-phase in, we just don't have it within our budget. And honestly, this public works building between, we're not, there's, we're not doing anything that's huge power. There's no cranes that's going to be in the building, there will be some welding equipment maybe, but that will be able to run off a single-phase unit. So we'll end up putting in, down by this pole here, I'll move this up. So here's the road that comes in, there's an existing overhead service that comes to an overhead pole right across from the existing public works building. What we'll do is, we've got to replace this line through here according to the electrical engineer. We have to put in a new transformer here, and we're gonna put in a small building that will have the switchgear, the panels, and the, they call it automatic transfer switch for the generator that's going in, that'll all be in that building. The generator will be right next door, the town has already procured the generator, they got a really good buy on the generator, so they've already bought that. So we have that in town, it's a 50 KW generator, based on what the electrical engineer has analyzed for loads on the sand and salt building, the public works building, the existing and the proposed. It looks like that 50 KW should be fine for the entire building. So from there, we'll go underground, we're gonna remove the overhead service to the public works building, and then we're gonna go underground over to it, and we'll go underground to the new building. There's an existing underground service that goes over to the sand and salt shed, there's some lights and a ventilation fan in the sand and salt building. We'll use that line that's there now and the electrical conductor and basically put in a handhold. It's a junction box that'll go in the ground and we'll tie into it, and that'll all run through the generator. So now all three buildings will be serviced off the generator if that happens, if we need that. What else can I tell you? Oh, let's look at the building. So Graham Architects, we brought them in to develop some plans for the building. Jason has spent a fair amount of time with David Graham. And so this area here is basically the administration area, there's a couple of bathrooms. There's a little bump out here that will have some lockers available for them. There's a utility room, but we're gonna change that around a little bit. We're gonna have the shower come in through the utility, it's not really, it's a utility room, but it's gonna be a, you lock the door if somebody wants to go in, a single-user shower, and then the bathrooms. Because what we were worried about was having a shower in the bathroom, it's a little awkward if, if. And plus, we're only gonna have one shower, and we'll have two bathrooms, so we wanted to have it as a single-user, any gender shower. So we're changing that around a little bit on it to make that work. And then there's a, well, it says an office, but it's really administration in here and a vestibule that comes in, a foreman. Some of these will be used for storage initially, but based on the projections of where the town's going, we're gonna need that space at, at some point for a crew. And then there'll be a, a break room down through here, which is also, ends up serving as a training room for safety training, things like that. If crews are on, on 24-hour storm watch, they have a place to come to sit down. There'll be a, basically a kitchenette in there for, I call, I always call it crock pot alley, because if they're working, they come in and grab something to eat and move in and out. So there will be a training area in there. This area here will be heated and air-conditioned, we'll just use an exterior commercial VRF, variable refrigeriflue heat pump, an outside heat pump that will service the crew area. That's, that's all they, that works really efficiently, so that'll be. There's gonna be a workshop area, a storage area, there's a bath out here for the, for, in the, in the work area. Sometimes it's nice not to have, to have everybody trek through the sort of the finished area, it's very convenient. We always, every, whenever we don't put one out there, everybody says, how come we didn't put one out there? So we'll put one out there. There'll be an eye wash, there'll be a mechanics office out here, we're gonna reconfigure that a little bit, right? And there, and then there'll be a, a stair up to a second-floor mezzanine that will just be storage up above. The workshop parts, things like that, that can go up above. And then there'll be seven bays, the bays will have drive-through, one won't because I need the area for storage. But the building's 120 feet long, 100 feet wide, and this framing plan will change a little bit because what we're doing is we're gonna run the pitch of the roof. Instead of, the way this is drawn right now, it's as if the pitch of the roof goes out to the outside where the doors are, we're not doing that. We're gonna go in a different direction so that we're trying not to put the pitch of the roof so it dumps the snow and ice out in front of the bay doors. I see some that do that, and it works just because of spans and the way, but we had a long conversation and it looks like we can do it this way, which makes a little more sense. So it's, we don't have a lot of money, honestly. I know, well, it sounds like a lot what was approved, but I, I've spent a lot more money on buildings and stuff. So this building will be a pre-engineered metal building, foundation with a spread footing, a wall up, have metal panels on it. Sometimes we use these, what they call insulated metal panels, but we're not gonna require that on that because I don't think we can afford to do that, so it could end up being like the vinyl bat insulation with a wall covering partway. And it's gonna go out as a design build project, which means we give them the site and civil plans, we say this is what we want. We give them narratives on the building, what we want for, we'll give them these plans, show us the dimensions of the building, what we want in the buildings, and it's up to the design builder, they might pack, they might package up a Varco-approved building, or they might do a Butler building, there's different manufacturers, so we're gonna let the competitiveness of that, of that get us the best value for the building. And then hopefully it will all fall within budget, and then we can award a contract and get a building built. If it goes well, we want to get the, out the bid this upcoming summer, pick a contractor, get them going on it so that hopefully get concrete and things like that done. Getting the metal buildings isn't been as bad as it was a few years ago, COVID just messed up everything. But it's not as bad as it was, we're a little, we're, there are some local, there are some American metal building manufacturers. So we've had this conversation about if tariffs are gonna hurt us or, or not. We're, we're not, honestly, we're not entirely sure yet, but we'll, we're not, we don't have any specific, we're not using any federal funding, so I don't have to worry about the Baba Buy American, Build American, I don't have to worry about Davis Bacon Wait rates or anything like that. This is all local funding. So honestly, when I have to use those federal requirements, it tends to elevate the cost of the project quite a bit. And it's a pain on my side to manage that, so we're gonna, we'll have a, we'll put it out that way. The building, the interior finishes are pretty basic, like I said, concrete floor, concrete wall up because the bottom part of the wall always gets abused. Inside the office areas will be, I think we decided to leave it as a concrete floor in there with a hardener on it. And then, which is basically like a sealed concrete floor, easy to clean up. I did the same thing up in Worno, works pretty well, people come in and out. And if someday you want to add flooring, you can always add it later on. The walls will all be basically gypsum wallboard, we'll put some in the bathrooms, I think we're gonna put FRP panels in the bathrooms. That's a little more resistant to, to abuse that happens, so. But we haven't completely finished out what the inside of the, the building, what those finishes are, but we're getting there. Exterior, the only lighting we're proposing to do is LED lighting on the building. And outside, we aren't really proposing any pole lighting, if we can light the perimeter of the building, because the sand and salt shed already has lighting, the existing public works does, so we're gonna just start there with the building lighting on it. If I add pole-mounted site lighting, that starts to get expensive too. We talk about budget a lot, don't we? So that is where we're headed. Tonight is really, we're not looking for a decision tonight, I need to update some plans, and I promise that I will give you full-size plans, not the little 11 by 17, sorry, I should have handed out. Actually, I like that, I want to know where you got that, because I may want one of those. We'll do full-size plans, I don't think Southern Maine Regional Planning, they're pretty, pretty benign, pretty straightforward.
The only thing that she had brought up that she emailed today just as a reminder that we discussed and you had me marked, had marked up, that on the next set of plans is the parking.
Yes.
Does it need the parking?
Right, they'll, we'll show where the, we'll probably put it over here along the office area here, but we'll just designate some dedicated parking, I'll put some chain striping down on it, we hadn't done that on it. Honestly, I was, I originally wasn't, I was debating about whether to do or not, because most people park wherever they want anyway on a site like this. But, but the point was valid, if there's a visitor or public that comes on the site. And technically, I need to designate a handicap parking station, so I, I do have to put it up there. So we'll, we'll probably put it right over here on the front, handicap, right? Yeah, I think we talked maybe about right here where the front door was. So we'll, we'll, we'll put that, we'll add that to the plan, and we'll make those updates. I've already made a number of updates, I, I added the, the building and changed the electrical and the septic because that all happened since we made the original submit, but we'll put it all together in a, in a final submit. That's the project, Jason, do you have anything to add, or?
No, not really, you covered most of that, unless you guys got questions for us.
Yeah, anything for me?
Dennis is gonna just say bring it in on budget, right? See?
Good luck.
So we'll, we'll do the best we can. I, I mean, we've talked a little bit, if we do have budget problems, I don't know what'll happen with, you know, probably the low-hanging fruit is, sorry, Jason, your overhang on the end would probably go away.
Be the first to go.
That would likely, because the inside of the building, this is, this is a very basic, pre-engineered metal building. We're not doing anything heroic on it. We'll probably write in the, in the specification that they designed the roof of the building, but they're not gonna install it, we can't afford it right now, but designed the building to support solar if that ever happened later on the building. That's not a big lift, it generally is, it might add a few purlins or something like that to the top, but we generally will write in the spec that they have to accommodate future solar on it. And if that ever, you know, comes to fruition, if we can get there, then we will offset some of the energy. So that's the project.
You got no questions?
Tried to cover as much of the.
Yeah, no, it was very thorough, thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions at this point, I suppose.
These two are just saying hurry up on it. I know, they want to get building on it, which we're gonna, we're, we're getting, we're making good progress.
The driveway that goes in, so when I go to transfer station, I go to the right of the fence.
Yep.
Yours is going to the left of the fence in and out, or are you using the same transfer area?
So we, the, you know where our entrance is, at the red gate.
At the red gate, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the same entrance that we'll use, so if you guys come up to the recycle compactor, and you guys, you're looking up our driveway, essentially, is when you get out of your cars, that's off to the right a little bit, but that's gonna be the main driveway that you see going up to the main building.
Here's the recycling compactor right here.
Yeah, so when you're sitting there unloading, you can see that main entrance. But yes, the, the paved entrance that we have right now is, will be the driveway that public will use to come up to the building.
How many people are you, right now, how many people compared to what you think you're gonna have in two years?
Right now, how many do we have? Well, there's four with me.
Right, in two years.
I would say at least.
Two more?
Probably two to three more.
Yep.
It all depends on where the, what the town decides to do with it.
You know, and say, you're gonna have, your goal, I think, down the road is to be self-sufficient, right?
Yep.
I mean, you're talking six or eight trucks probably, I would think. So that, that building will. So that, that building will, long-term, hopefully will be self-sufficient and will be full.
Yeah.
You'll have a crew and your own trucks, which I think is long overdue, I think.
If you were to do that, does that modify this plan at all? Meaning like, would you need a place for people to sleep and, and things like that if you were to take that on, or?
Most, I mean. I used to work at Standish and we had, you know, they're, I think they're trying to do a building now. I don't know if they'll put sleeping quarters in it or not, but when you work twenty-hour storms, you know, if it's in the middle of the night, you know, Dwayne can attest, two o'clock, one o'clock in the morning.
You go home.
You go, you go find a spot to take a nap.
Sure.
You know, if, if it's gonna continue very heavily.
Yeah.
You know, most of the time, they, they can either come in the break room and, you know, we'll probably have a couch in there, a recliner. Maybe, I mean, if we get some cots if they want. But nine times out of ten, the guys just sleep in the trucks, which, you know, is not very comfortable, but.
And you think the one shower is gonna be enough? I'm not trying to spend my money, but look at what happened at the fire barn.
I do.
I was gonna say, in a public works garage, the only reason you're gonna ever use that shower is if you get into a real mess.
Chem, like a chemical spill or.
And that shower may be used for adult attendance or public work.
But not to say that i- if we're working a twenty-hour storm and, you know, it, it runs into the neck, you have to come in at ten and it runs into the next day. If a guy wants to come in and take a quick shower just to wake up, I mean, if we're working a twenty-hour storm, I'll make time for everyone to, if that's what they wanna do, you know?
If it helps, like when I did Orono, which is, well, it's about fourteen people on their crew. They have a men's, women's, one shower in each one of them. It's funny, the only shower that ever got used, at least when I was working there, was one of the town employees came down and ran it in time. I mean, we, we put him in, but.
We have a shower now in our building. We never use it.
Okay, good.
So that, we run it, just to run it, but, you know, like Wayne said, if someone gets, you know, some type of chemical.
I worked out a few dozen state garages, you know, all the newer ones have got a shower.
It's, it's there, I think one is going to be sufficient, right?
Thank you.
If you're a nasty, nasty dog before you went home, you might take a shower just to get everything off you.
We will change the layout on this because we need to make it a shower room so that, like I said, it's a single occupant, you come in and lock the door. Because you never, so regardless of whether you have any women or you don't right now, we have to, we're obligated to provide equal facilities in a building. So there is, there'll be facilities for men's, women's bathrooms. Sometimes we've even done a single occupant, you know, but I, I think in this case, this, we had a long conversation, this, this works just fine. Great question. Thank you. Hopefully you'll see a building up there sometime, it'll take, if we get started.
It's very, it's very simple, like you said, in between bays will have airlines, outlets. The wash bay will have a catch basin in it.
Yes. Which is right here, this wall right here is a separation, it's a, the, this is, this'll be the wash bay right here.
And then there'll be a curtain, right?
Yes.
That'll be a curtain?
Yes.
So you can contain.
Anode, we used to do, you go into buildings, you see the floor drains, the strip drains that go across. We still will have those on, on the exterior doors, and then they'll get picked up and taken over through the water separator. But what we found in the wash bay, actually it was the public works director in Westbrook that came up with this idea. It's weren't great, we've used it elsewhere. We, we don't put in the strip drain anymore because nobody likes to clean those out. Those, you gotta pull the grate out, they're really difficult to clean out. So we put in basically an oversized catch basin, Wayne, that had a deeper sump in it. So you can go up with a back truck and just suck it out and clean it out that way and head out. And everybody's been happier with that than those strip drains.
That's probably not, not a dirtier job than to try to clean and catch the drains in those two garages.
Well, I, I wish I could tell you, I'm the, I'm the one that thought about that, it wasn't, it was the public works director in Westbrook. But I think good ideas from whoever gives them. I'm not bashful about that.
Modine heaters will be in the corners.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the, inside the work bay, it'll be wall-mounted gas, that's why we have the propane tanks. That's the least-cost way to do it. Radiant floor heat would be nice, but we don't have, we just don't have the money for it to do that. So we'll, we'll put the other ones up. What's that?
Thinking of miles of pipe.
Yeah, oh, it's, it adds up, and then I have to do special insulation in the bottom of it, 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 it's, it.
It's a lot.
It's great, I mean, I won't, I won't kid you, it's, people generally like it because it melts underneath, but it comes at a premium and we're already pretty pricey. These buildings have crept up in cost over the years. I mean, I just budgeted one out working in Raymond and they want radiant floor heat and stuff. And we're up, well, we've got a committee that's getting started, but probably all-in, probably, they want a crane. We're up around five, six million dollars on those buildings. They, it starts to add, it built ends through, the steel prices jumped like forty percent and everything just, and the mechanical and the electrical now, I, I, it just scares me when I see how much the tin knockers get for, you know, mechanical and electrical work in it. So we're trying to keep it, basically, I think there's what, two-point-six million or something like that in it? So it sounds like a lot, but it goes fast. That's the project. If all goes well, we'll come back maybe in May, I guess. When, when, uh, when's, when's the next, when do I need to have plans?
It'll be the sixteenth, but, I mean, we're already booked that, so you're looking at the first meeting in May.
Okay. Oh, yeah, the first meeting in May is fine, yeah. Because we can keep going on the rest of our documents we haven't put together to put it out the bid. But thank you for allowing us to share it with you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for this great information.
I didn't even take up the point.
Now the board's purview is to accept the preliminary plan, if it's okay.
Okay.
Motion to accept the preliminary plan?
I second that. All those in favor? Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Jesus, does this mean it's a short meeting?
We'll see, Mike wants to spring stuff on us on the last night.
There's plenty of stuff coming, so I think we'll be fine. It's gonna be busy in the next couple of months, for sure.
So when, when do I need to have stuff back, full size this time?
You would need to have it back to me.
We'll go to board chats, okay? We'll go to board chats, we need full-size prints.
I know, I got that.
I'm, I'm teasing.
I mean, if you could have it back to me by the sixteenth, because then I can get it back to them ahead of that, May seventh meeting, but the twenty-third.
Okay. So you're writing that down, Laura, for me, right? She's, she's been helping me with the projects, she's from, I didn't introduce Laura. Laura is one of our young engineers that joined us, and Laura's been helping me on the design plans. I think the bird has some sickness in the family, so she didn't wanna share.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. We'll see what has to be called, that's our next, we'll be in touch. See, you got, you got a full-size, huh?
That's because I complained.
Do we want to go here in the same time?
As well, right? When was that, May?
Seventh.
So sting this out a little bit, we need to, there's a whole bunch coming.
I do.
Yeah. Well, you just like saying that, doesn't it?
Well, there were two.
I, yes, we've heard.
Two hundred, two hundred Main Street. And then, and then, and then Waterboro Crossing came in today as well.
The stores.
No, no, no stores.
Amendment. Amendment.
Amendment.
Sorry.
Practice applies.
You don't want to hold.
Hope it's over, let's get it done.
All right, next on the agenda, we have minutes of previous meetings. So we have the minutes from February fifth meeting. Did anybody have any questions, changes? Okay, and then the next one was March nineteenth minutes. I didn't have any questions, but I don't know if that means.
No, I didn't. Oh, good.
So can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February fifth and March nineteenth, May twenty-five.
Perfect.
All right, looks like a lot.
All right, all those in favor? All right, so next is communication.
Um, no actual communication, but as you can see in front of you, as Mike said, two hundred Main Street has come with their next set of plans as well as Waterboro Crossing for a site plan review amendment for their originally approved plan. So those will be on the agenda for the sixteenth.
Um, I will not be here on the sixteenth, please.
Who's gonna run the show?
I am.
But does that, is a problem? And she's gonna have to reduce herself.
Oh.
Yeah, what do you think?
Think we don't have a form, we don't feel able to.
Right.
So.
Unless. You, Dennis, when is your next, you guys at the fifteenth, right?
Yeah, and we're interviewing for a potential, um, planning board now.
Yeah. Um, not sure what everybody's feeling is, I mean, April gives us an extra two Wednesdays. That gives us the twenty-third and the thirtieth.
Yeah, I'm good except for the sixteenth, so.
We'll go to the twenty-third?
That's probably me, I don't know.
I'm good with that.
I'm good too.
So we'll be two weeks from today, no, three weeks from today.
Uh, so next is miscellaneous.
Nothing today.
Anybody, anybody? All right, that just leaves adjournment, so. Need a motion to approve?
A motion to adjourn?
I second that.
All those in favor? Thank you, everybody.